Thank you all for your time.
Let's see. Going to go all the way to item number nine now.
Yeah.
Item number nine, item number nine, "Discussion and Public Hearing on Request to Amend the Farragut Zoning Ordinance to Address Buffer Strip Requirements Where an Adjacent Property Is Shown as Non-Residential on Future Land Use Map," Shawd Company's applicant.
Yes, this item was discussed last month for workshop purposes. It involves a request to amend the buffer strip requirements in the general commercial district to basically provide the planning commission with the ability to evaluate a property that's zoned residential or agricultural, but because of its location is shown on the future land use map as something non-residential. This particular ordinance reflects a draft that the staff had put before the planning commission last month that the commission seemed to be satisfied with. The language in ordinance 23-16, it doesn't waive the buffer strip requirements. In fact, you don't have to reduce them at all, but it gives you the ability to evaluate a situation to see what buffer, if any, requirement should apply based on the context that you're looking at. So, the ordinance, again, just to discuss what was in the thing that's changing, or is proposed to be changed. It's basically adding language that the buffer, it talks about the required buffer, and it says, "Unless such property is shown as non-residential land use on the adopted future land use map, in this case, the planning commission may consider modification to the buffer strip. Based on the surrounding built environment and context, this may include whether the properties adjacent to a major arterial street are surrounded by non-residential development." So, that's kind of the language that's in this particular ordinance, and the staff recommends approval of resolution PC-23-11, which recommends approval of ordinance 23-16.
Okay, I call for a motion.
Move to approve.
Second. Kevin. Any citizens sign up on this one, Mark?
No, sir.
Okay. You have the podium. Any comments, questions?
No, sir, I really don't. Rodney Phillips, by the way, should represent Shawd Company's 5820 Walden Drive in Knoxville. No, I think we had a really, really good workshop last month on this and discussed it at length, so I have no additional comments unless anyone has any questions for us.
Any other comments from any of the commissioners?
I have none.
None.
Leo, you have any?
Nope.
Okay. Call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion, signify, saying yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving to item number 10. Now, this is for discussion, discussion only. Discussion on Request Rezone Properties Currently Shown as Rural Single Family Acre Residential R1 SA to Rural Residential R1 and to amend the Farragut zoning ordinance to remove R1 SA as a zoning district. Mike Tool, applicant, I hope I didn't murder your name.
No, you missed it very good, actually.
This item is, of course, for discussion only, but it potentially could involve amendments to the zoning map and the zoning text. One of the town's residential zoning districts is the R1 SA. It's basically R1 with a requirement for a minimum lot size of one acre is mostly what it is. The only subdivision in town that's zoned this is Bel Air. There's part of the Concord Baptist property is zoned this as well as you come in off of Bel Air Drive. This district's been in place for decades. I mean, I don't know when it was first actually created. It's been here, I believe, before I've been here, and it's been a while. Nobody's requested a rezoning to this. We do have a need for probably kind of an estate lot, kind of subdivision district potentially, but this really wouldn't fit that. There'd be a lot of other parameters that we'd need to look at if we developed something like that. The biggest issue here is that probably over half of the lots in Bel Air are less than one acre, so they're non-conforming right now. And that really limits what people can do with their lots. They can't really re-divide or shift a property line even when it is logical and consistent with the surrounding plan of development, so it kind of creates some issues with their ability to do that. Basically, the staff's recommending to, and does support the applicant's request, recommending to rezone all that area to R1 and then ultimately get rid of the R1 SA zoning district altogether. In addition to the lot size difference, the R1 has a 20,000 square foot minimum lot size, and all the lots in Bel Air are at least 20,000 square feet. I looked at that. The other difference is the side setbacks for houses in R1 SA have to be a total of 50 feet. In R1, it's a total of 40, the combined, and there's some houses in there that are non-compliant because of the 50-foot setback as well. So, they don't have any options to add on or do anything for those particular locations. So, there's just, to me, there's a lot of reasonable reasons to get rid of this district and to rezone it to R1. It wouldn't affect how anybody's using their property, all the uses that are generally allowed in R1 SA are allowed in R1. R1 SA does have a few institutional uses that could be allowed as a special exception, and those really are uses like playgrounds, parks, neighborhood municipal buildings, and libraries, and really, those would be better suited for a rezoning to community service, or S1 zone. That's not really residential-type uses. So, again, you know, the staff's very supportive of this request. It makes sense, and we would recommend to the planning commission that we move forward in the rezoning of that area and getting rid of the R1 SA.
Were there any citizens who signed up to speak?
No, sir.
Okay. You have any comments?
No, sir.
Any questions, comments from the commissioners?
Yes.
Mayor?
You recommend the, or you are the one that is representing the subdivision?
Yes.
The whole subdivision?
As far as, as far as...
Are they on board? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, I think, I'm pretty sure they are. You know, they had a rezoning.
We put a sign up right in a very visible location when you come around up the Bel Air Drive where that cul-de-sac is, and you can't miss it.
Did you get any calls on it?
I've no, no, not. We had some questions when we put the sign out. We had three people, but I haven't personally had any calls about it.
There's not any issues with backyard chickens or something that's going to come up?
No, any uses that are allowed in R1 and R1 SA are the same in that regard. If you've got more than an acre in R1, you can do agricultural uses.
Then you can do the chickens. Okay, what I'm trying to think is just, we're not inadvertently prohibiting something else that somebody's doing today?
No.
I will add this. I think that if we, if this moves, which I'm supportive of this, it doesn't really make sense because it's never been used anywhere else, and what we really do need is an estate-sized lot. Estate-sized lots zoning ordinance, and this is not it. R1 SA is not it. But if we're going to do this, we probably need to amend the land use plan just to make it clear, because right now, the front of it is greater than an acre. It's rural residential, designated rural residential. So, it's probably, just clean up our land use map while we're doing this.
Yeah.
Would probably be the best time to do it.
Any other comments or questions?
Are we going to create any, any issues with the church playgrounds in some of that R1?
No, because those are all...
Or I guess it's real ball fields.
They're all accessory uses to the principal use of the property, and that's allowed under both districts.
Okay, so that, we're not going, okay.
Churches and schools are allowed in both.
Well, churches can pretty much go anywhere they want.
Yeah, and accessory uses are allowed in both.
I just wanted to just make sure we're not creating a slow somewhere.
No, I thought about that, too. Yes, I thought about that. I was trying to look at, see if that would affect the church negatively, and it would. Now, there's a few, there's two or three lots that could potentially be subdivided further because there's enough land...
Right.
...to do that. And then there's some properties that could be re-divided by giving them the flexibility to get away from that one acre minimum lot size, but I don't personally see that as a concern because it's still, the lots are still going to be at least 20,000 square feet.
Well, we've already got a bunch of lots of record in there that's less than an acre.
Yeah, you've got a bunch that are 20,000 square feet, so it's not. That's the only thing I could see that somebody may, may have a concern about. It could add two or three more house lots in the overall development, potentially.
Mike, was there a particular catalyst from the neighborhood on this?
It actually came from my brother-in-law. I live in there, by the way. I live in Bel Air, in Cresky Road. My brother-in-law bought a lot that's in front of my lot. It was a non-conforming lot. We didn't know at the time. But then he's got, all the lots in there on Bel Air Drive, I think when it originally was one acre, they're all very narrow, like 100 feet, like 500 feet long.
They're deep.
Very long and narrow. And he, one of those lots had been, on Cresky Road, had been subdivided, and now his front property line, which used to be a side property line, is now a front property line. The front and the back setbacks, he's got 40 feet to build a house with porches and everything like that. So, he thought, well, if I could get the land behind my lot, and I talked to Mark about it, he said, eh, he can't do that, because if he does that, he's going to make that lot...
Non-conforming. You're making, right. You're taking away from it.
He'll make, he'll make one lot conforming, but the other lot, non-conforming, so he couldn't do that. So, that wouldn't have been, would not be an option.
Well, I think R1 is a good fit here, and so I would definitely support change. And I mean, I don't necessarily think we just need to eliminate the R1 SA, but maybe we need to rework it and create this kind of, I'd like personally to see, to incentivize what few pieces of property we have left, to incentivize folks to do, do big estate lots, you know? And maybe it's, you know, if you're doing over acre lots, maybe you don't have to do the 10% open space, or do some things like that to incentivize, which is different than what, you know, we've pushed the, kind of, the clustering for a lot of years, but, and, you know, with, with market demand and free economics, there's not a whole lot we can, we can do with somebody's, somebody's options, but what we can do is we can encourage them to try something different, so...
Well, the problem is that we have had people want to do estate-sized lots, and then they have to grant a bunch of variances, because the only thing we have is R1. And you remember the one on Union Road, that, he had like six or seven variances.
Why didn't we look at R1 SA like for Steve Williams?
We did. It was in consideration. I think Shannon had pressed, had pointed that out to him.
That SA might have been an option.
Yes, and I'm not sure what his reasoning was, but he wanted to just do the...
R1.
R1. R1 or, did he do R1 OS?
He did R1.
I think you said just the old-school R1.
Yeah.
He was thinking about giving him more flexibility if he wanted to have smaller lots in the future.
Well, I mean, a little bit less setbacks and things like that, but, you know, but again, for another night, let's, let's discuss some sort of estate zone, and maybe some incentives in there.
Probably just need to brainstorm and have like a workshop discussion of that. What are the things that, what are the things that have been, oh, sorry. We had to get variances on and figure that out.
Right.
And then just kind of lay it out, and then draft the parameters around that. But the R1 SA is so out of touch with all that, and it has a 10% open space. To me, you'd almost have to just create something completely different.
Okay.
But that's just my opinion. I'm open to whatever, but...
To be clear, the motion removes the R1 SA.
Well, the motion doesn't. This is just a discussion.
Yeah, we're not going to do a motion.
If it went forward.
Well, I would think that all you're doing is a rezoning. This is not a combo thing.
Yeah, we could just do a rezoning if that's your, what you're wanting to do at this point, and then, then we can further evaluate whether we want to keep the R1 SA.
Do you think it'll come on the next agenda?
It can, yeah. I mean, we can have that ready. It's pretty straightforward.
It should be pretty simple, cut and dry, really.
On the, that one item?
Yeah.
I have a comment. On behalf of the applicant, I know this is not a vote, but does anyone have objections to this rezon proposal?
Yeah, that's what I was really going to draw out.
Thank you.
Okay. No further discussion, then we'll move on to item number 11.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good seeing you again, too.
Discussion on a concept plan involving a mixture of different residential rental building types for purposes of determining if there is support for recommending associated amendments to the Farragut zoning ordinance, Novu Residential Group LLC applicant. Welcome.
Yeah, this was, this was briefly discussed under a citizen forum item back in the August meeting, and we had asked the applicant to go back and get some, give us some more detail and put together at least kind of a, a more planned-out concept and kind of an idea of what they really were wanting to do. And it potentially could involve, you know, amendments obviously to the text of the zoning ordinance and rezonings and future land use map amendments. And really, the applicant's just wanting to see very early on whether there's any, you know, movement that anybody would be okay, you know, with this moving forward, or if there's certain suggestions or things that they would need to know about as they, you know, move in this direction. They've got a piece of property in mind, and it's kind of hard to see on the screen, but it's basically, obviously, this is the interstate, and you've got Snyder Road Outlet Drive. This is Topgolf. Then you've got the Tapestry Apartments in Knox County off of Snyder Road that comes down to join Outlet Drive, and right across from that is where this, the applicant is looking to have this kind of product. I don't really want to get too hung up in the concept, but it's helpful to kind of know what this might look like, look and feel like. But it's really basically just a mixture of different housing types. They would be intended to be rental. That's not, to me, necessarily important, but it, I'd focus more really on the scale of the buildings. Some of these would be what we've heard in the news about, especially with the city in Knoxville, looking at the missing middle housing. Generally, missing middle housing is multi-unit buildings that are generally compatible in scale, like the footprint and the height to a single-family residence. So, some of these would fall into that and some wouldn't. It's got kind of a mixture of, there's detached cottages, duplexes, townhomes, and then there's a couple of larger three-story apartment buildings here. I think those have 26 units in each of those buildings. This particular property is about 14 and a half acres, and they're proposing to have 128 total units for a density of about 8.87 dwelling units per acre. Since there would be kind of common maintenance of the property, kind of like a typical multifamily project, there is kind of a threshold that you need for occupancy to have, you know, an acceptable level of maintenance, you know, people funding the maintenance of the overall common areas and the exteriors and everything that has to be maintained on, on these kind of developments. So, that's kind of what they're, why they're mixing in some of the bigger buildings. I think, from my perspective, it's an interesting concept, and we can go through the slides that were provided to look at what some of the buildings might look like. I think if the, the planning commission, and ultimately, frankly, the Board of Mayor and Alderman want to, you know, visit this, to me, it would be something we would need to tie a rezoning to whatever district this might fall under, maybe the R6, to a concept plan similar to what we did with S1 and OSMR. And that way, you know, before a property's zoning is actually changed, we kind of have an idea of the housing types, the scale, the general configuration, and phasing of how this might, might work. And if, you know, they don't follow that plan, then, you know, it, the rezoning would revert back to what it was prior. So, there's some level of commitment to that, that the community is kind of guaranteed before the zoning is actually changed. Some other questions just to think about as we go through the slides, you know, which, if it's something that you all want to pursue, is it something that should be added into an existing zoning district or maybe a, create a different zone that's like a planned residential? The bigger question to me is, are there other areas in town where this might fit? This area here is kind of detached from a lot of the town because it's on the north side of the interstate. It's got Buddy Gregg Motor Home area, I guess it's lazy days now, in this area. Then you've got the Tommy's Water Sports here, which, by the way, is opening in about a week and a half. The Tapestry multifamily development here. So, there's, that's kind of the existing plan of development around this. There's a couple of smaller, single-family homes before you get to the, the school property up here off of Snyder Road. So, that's kind of what you're surrounded by in this particular location. But, you know, before you create a new district or new parameters, you probably ought to have other areas in your community where you feel like this could potentially be an option. It may be a different mixture. Maybe you just give them the opportunity to mix different types of products in the same zoning, as long as it's consistent with the concept, and the concept may have to be modified to the, to its context, you know? And there may be some other infill areas where clearly a larger footprint multifamily building wouldn't work, but it may, maybe other more true missing middle houses could potentially work on, on those properties. So, that's something to think about. Then obviously, if, if you do move forward with this property, there would have to be a future land use map amendment to this, because it's mostly open space cluster, and we updated the future land use map about three years ago for this area. So, the OSMR is an option on this property with the mixed detached and attached under the, the way the property's future land use is currently designated. But this, what's shown there would not fit the current future land use map. And then just making sure that the infrastructure is, is available and up to the standards that can service this type of development. Obviously, you have a larger apartment development on the other side of the road, so they do have a pretty robust amount of infrastructure in that area. Just going through some of the slides, and these were in the packet, and Tony can talk through these in more detail, but this is just showing you some of the products that this would have, the smaller cottages. I think the, I was looking at the footprint areas, and the footprint of these buildings range from about 790 square feet for the detached cottage to the, to the larger multifamily buildings of about 8,800 square feet. So, so these are some of the, these would be missing middle-type products, most of these, because again, they do kind of have that single-family attached-detached scale. There's kind of a little bit of this at the, at the North Shore Town Center. They're building some three-story townhomes there, and they've got kind of a mix as you go further north into that development of townhomes, some smaller cottages and some larger detached, single-family, so that in a completely different arrangement, the North Shore Town Center is, does have a mix of housing types. This will be a little different, because these would be all rental, but that is something visually somewhat comparable to what, what they're doing here. Again, these are some of the, the products. The bigger multifamily buildings, there's two of them in this particular project, and again, they're about 8,800 square feet. And then some of the townhomes is what they would look like. This is the location. The Tapestry Apartments is on the right side of the screen. The property they're looking at, obviously, is across the road on the left side. And that was in the packet as well. That just breaks down. It's possible to read that, but it talks about the, what type of units they are, the square footages and all that, and then some building elevation sheets that, on these, let's see if I've got the handout here. So, if you look on this, the smaller cottage, this building here, and these are just, I'm just giving you these heights just so you kind of understand, is it really impossible to read? But to the peak of the, the roof on the detached cottage is 20 feet. You've got about 26 feet to the carriage unit. As you, as we go down here, this is a clubhouse. It's 36 feet to the peak. Of course, we just measure midway through the roof line, but I'm just giving you the peak height on all these. This is 25, the deluxe townhome to the top of the roof. The tuck-under townhouse is 28 feet, and then the three-story buildings are 43 feet to the peak, 35 feet to the midway, midpoint here. So, that's kind of an overview of what they're requesting your feedback on, and I'll turn it over to Tony if you have some specific questions on his...
I have one for you, Mark. You might want to explain what a tuck-under is for the audience. I think everybody else understands all the rest of the nomenclature, but that one may not.
It's just where the garage, I think, is, is basically under...
Yeah, you would have basically a, a single box, and then the back of the, off the alley in these particular units, you would have the garage at the ground level, and then your second story would go over top of it, whereas the deluxe townhomes is the, you kind of have your main footprint of your house, and then the garage is attached, but it's behind it.
Would you give us your name and address?
Yes, yes, sorry. Tony Saraci, 2207 Second Avenue North, Birmingham, Alabama, with Novu Residential.
There are some of those tuck-under townhomes at the North Shore Town Center, too, that are, that are new, under construction.
Yeah, all of the, all of the townhomes that we are proposing are two stories. They will be, whether they're the tuck-under or they kind of have a garage further back that may have a room over top of it as well, but they're all two stories and range from, you know, two bedrooms to potentially four-bedroom homes.
Okay. I think it's a real interesting concept, and it, it checks a lot of boxes of housing types that we don't have in the, in the town. You know, I wish there was more walkability to services and restaurants and things like that, but, you know, I think that'll come with, on Outlet Drive. I think, next to Topgolf, I think there's going to be some more development, and you probably get a sit-down restaurant, and, but, but I think it's a, it's a real interesting concept.
Yeah, and then potentially with the, you know, the Reinlin and the Campbell Station interchange, if there's, if there's, you know, connectivity about bike and walking under the interstate, then that really opens up all of Turkey Creek, you know, as, as kind of a, an access point from the property.
Yeah, most of the missing middle, like, and this is not really a missing middle project, some of it is, but those are oftentimes incorporated into older, more pedestrian-oriented areas, which, like you said, no, this is not really right now. There is a sidewalk along the Tapestry's frontage, and then, of course, we have walking trails and sidewalks along our streets. They would be putting in a, a walking trail on their frontage. So, but, you know, right now, it's not a particularly pedestrian-oriented space, that's for sure.
And then, you know, obviously, this will be a, a single plot, one piece of property. We're not going to change that. We're not going to subdivide the property. It would be a, a single common owner, like any traditional multifamily complex would be. You know, you're going to have a property manager who's going to be on staff, onsite full-time, is going to manage the site. You're going to have pool, workout facility in the clubroom.
Do you have any other similar properties?
We, we do not have anyone that is specifically like this property, no. But we have other properties. We're doing a townhome development that's in Nashville that's currently under construction as well.
I just curious if they're in demand, is kind of what I was asking.
We see a pretty high demand for this product, and specifically, you know, these kind of mixed residential units rather than just a standard apartment complex, because you, you fit certain gaps of people that don't want to live in an apartment. Like, you've got people who, now with current interest rates at, you know, nearly 8% or at 8%, becoming a homeowner is not as attainable as it once was at interest rates... becoming a homeowner is not as attainable as it once was at interest rates of 3% and less. So, but they need more space because maybe they have young kids, they're not school-aged kids, but they need more space. And so these, this provides that avenue with also the extra benefits of, you know, not maintaining your yard, having clubhouse, having those sorts of recreational and fitness facilities. In addition, we see people who are on the other end of the spectrum where they have ridiculous amount of equity in their house, but they don't want to buy and downsize. So this gives them an opportunity to come into a community where they can still be active. There's going to be lots of, you know, walking paths and trails through the property. But it gives them a great avenue that there's not a ton of market out there for it.
You fill all 120, 16 units, not the first pass.
I will say, since we made our initial public comment, Citizen Forum, in August, we've had multiple residents within the area, within the town, reach out to us and say, can you get it? Can we lease the unit now? And I'm like, we're a long way away from that. But we'll, we'll, you know. So we, we see it as really just a different style of multifamily or apartments. What we would like to, you know, propose, as Mark has said, is obviously try to rezone the property to R6, tie that rezone to a specific concept plan that we have, you know, kind of, we put together here.
I'm, I'm, I'm going to talk, first off, we just did this corridor update in 2019, I believe. Is that the timeframe that we did this? And we specifically, I don't know that we had any residents show up for this corridor study. So we were kind of left to our own devices. Let me get the, let me make sure I know what day we did this. January and February, we did the review of Outlet Drive, April 2019 FMPC adopted changes. And in those changes, we, we specifically re-designated this area as the open space cluster residential for OSR, OSMR. I understand that you may be hearing from someone, some folks, but I think overall, I think our community is, is tired. And multifamily is, has become synonymous with a four-letter word. So I don't know that I can, I feel comfortable amending the land use map and going to a higher density. I don't know that there's community support for this. I'm, I'm concerned about how we make this work in the current conditions in our community. We're, we're rapidly moving to build out. And people are, are really concerned about how the rest of it is going to build out. So my inclination is, and I will remind the, the planning commission, to the, to the west of Tapestry is Knox County, and it is zoned up to 12 units per acre PR. So that is, that is a possibility that that, this could be seen on that and may work better there, given the challenges of this property, which was probably one of the reasons why we, we re-designated it open space residential because of the sinkholes, because of the topography. We just thought that that was the more suitable use in 2019, so.
You mean the, the property to the east of Tapestry?
I'm sorry, east, yes, yes. That's in Knox County and it is zoned PR up to 12 units an acre. So regardless of what we do here, we know we're going to see density, more density on this corridor. So it's, that's something to think about.
I want to make sure I understand it. All of these units are going to be rented or are any of them going to be sold?
No, they will all be for rent units. Yeah, it'll be a. Yeah, what we consider a built-to-rent kind of mixed residential community.
It seems to me that this provides the town a figure with some additional housing that we really don't like in the middle of town because we have residences and developments that don't want apartments and this kind of housing next door. We hear that all the time. This isn't exactly next door to residences and it's near some commercial areas. So it seems like it meets a need in our town.
Yeah, I mean.
So that's, that's my comment.
Yes, from a developer standpoint, I mean, you've got great retail products close by. You've got great commercial facilities. You've got great connectivity to the interstates. You know, do you think you've got enough adjacent there to build a, you know, a, a commercial or strip center? Probably not, since you already have Turkey Creek across the interstate. So it really is really the, the, the natural fit for development is some sort of residential use that's going to require some additional density from where it currently is.
Kevin, you have any comments?
It's not Kevin.
Jeff, excuse me.
No, it's all right.
Other Kevin.
You know, I, I think like Mark had put, I'm, I don't, I'm not too hung up on whether it's, it's rental or purchase. I'm super interested in the concept. I think that the missing middle does apply to the town. And I definitely would like to pursue it further personally.
Shannon?
So I'm for the missing middle concept. I'm not for the apartment concept because it wasn't that long ago that this body changed to say, no more multifamily. And my question for Mark is, is that something that would require significant public outreach?
Well, I mean, this has some multifamily, those two buildings would be more traditional multifamily.
We're talking about specifically apartments. Because during that meeting, even Noah said, well, there are those little quadplexes. And if we eliminate this, then we're eliminating those. And we all chose to eliminate those. So we have plenty of apartments in Farragut. We don't have a lot of the little cottages and the things like that. I'm for that.
Well, that's a question. I mean, whether you could, those two larger buildings, the flats, the three-story, whether there's an opportunity to have, to basically get rid of those and then come up with a mixture of true missing middle that could work in this type of overall development. I mean, I, I think that's a legitimate question for this because, and I understand the tapestry's right across the road with the similar footprint buildings. And that, I understand the logic of what the applicant's requesting. But it, the, you know, it's true about the community, general, what we've heard at least, the community's not interested in more traditional multifamily buildings like those two buildings. If there's a way to, to truly mix in of, of developments, it's entirely true missing middle and have enough density for it to, to be maintainable, that might be something that would be more sellable. So I, I'm thinking if there's, there's a, to revisit these two buildings, I know they provide 28 units each, which is significant as far as getting your overall density that you need to have the level of individuals living there to properly maintain the overall development. But if, if there's a way to maybe look at the smaller buildings and mix in larger missing middle buildings in the overall development, I, I don't know, that might be something that would be more in line with, with what the community kind of said they liked when we had that missing middle workshop. And we really looked at true missing middle products. Like some of these are, no question about it.
And to your point, if, if a resident's looking because they've got a family and they don't want to live in an apartment, then they probably don't want to live across the street from an apartment or in the same development as an apartment. They're trying to get away from that.
Potentially, but I would say that the benefits of a community like this will have being fully amenitized. You're not going to have many just straight townhome missing middle communities like R1 that we're building in Nashville is not going to be fully amenitized. It's 79 units. There's not enough density there to give you the clubhouse, the pool, the recreational trails and those sorts of things. You, you're going to need a little bit more density, which is why we went with this route. You know, I mean, I think that, you know, obviously you guys have to make the decision and want to, to, you know, stay on the commission and support your citizens and their wishes. I'll say that the Tapestry is at 98% leased. The overlook at Farragut's over 98% occupied. I mean, so there's a couple that are under construction into the town of Farragut. But I mean, overall, everything that you have here is leased.
I don't, I don't have a problem with that aspect of it.
Yeah. So I mean, we, go ahead.
My, my comment would be that there's not very many locations, if any other locations in the town, that would be, to me, amenable to this mixture. And I think in this location, you know, irregardless of what people say, no more apartments, what have you, these aren't really just an apartment, this is not an apartment complex. It's, it's basically geared toward the missing middle as a focus. And in this location, I'm, you know, I'm kind of in favor of something if we can, you know, do it right and make sure we're.
I agree.
Dealing with the side.
And I agree with that too. I, I like the product in this location.
And it would be part of your concept plan that you would evaluate based on its context and what would be appropriate. So you may, if you had the concept option in R6 or whatever, there may be other parts of the town where that concept plan mix would clearly not include a larger footprint.
Exactly.
A multifamily building. Here, you look at the context and you have other buildings right across the street that are that scale. So that's one of the things to think about with the concept plan. It could be evaluated, you could use it to apply the mixture as it would be appropriate to the context potentially.
Yeah, I would hate to see us throughout the baby with the bathwater. I think the missing middle is very vital to, to the community. And the size of the complex that looks like an apartment is, is, is not as significant in this case in this concept. So I, I'm, I'm for this kind of concept and working out the details.
I've got a question. The North Shore Town Center, does it have a clubhouse and pool and all those amenities?
Uh, I don't think.
I think it did.
It seems to be some apartments there, but it's.
The apartments do.
That they're separate from North Shore. I mean, yes, they were part of the original development plan, but they're.
Yeah, it has just that large pocket park.
Yeah, right in the middle.
And some common space like that, yeah.
I love this concept. I love the, you know, the fact that this is the missing middle we've been looking for. But I don't think we need a, you know, a pool and a, you know, all the other amenities that might be going wrong with what you're trying to do. I'd rather see more of this in place of that and they be sold. That's my point instead of being rented.
Well, I think if you're treating this kind of like a subdivision, most of those have a rec, you know, recreational concept and a pool with it as an amenity.
I like the clubhouse and the pool.
So I think the amenity needs to be a part of this, in my opinion.
I think so too.
Well, we have to be careful about saying sold as parst. That's not our job. And that's, the zoning doesn't, it's agnostic on whether you buy or you rent. And we need to be careful as a planning decision that we're.
You've got to be very careful. I'm just wondering if it was, if the amenities were really needed.
That's a good question because that's what drives how many units you need for the maintenance reasons. So if you, if you scale back on some of those more expensive things to have to maintain, maybe you don't need as large a footprint buildings that would have the, a lot of the units.
Well, you have to, you have to balance that with the quality of what you're looking for in your overall.
Yeah, yeah, I don't have an opinion necessarily one way or the other. I'm just trying to present the information and, you know, y'all make an informed decision on these things. I, when we first met with him, I, I thought it, you know, in that location, it, I understood what he was trying to do. And I, I think looking at the missing middle is a good thing for, for the town or anywhere really where it makes sense. Now, it's really not a, like I said earlier, it's kind of a product that typically is used in a more urbanized area, like the city in Knoxville's doing. But it, that doesn't mean that you can't use some of those products in other locations. I do think we need to think about if, if this is something that we have as an option, are there other places in town where that might, maybe it's a different, completely different mixture, but missing middle type rental communities, which, you know, would, would potentially work. You know, so you don't want to just create something that's only going to be used one time in one place, like the R1 SA that we talked about earlier. It needs to be something that when, if, if we, you know, move in a direction of providing for it, that it could be something that could work in other parts of the town.
Well, typically when you say missing middle, you do not say apartments.
No, that's right, no, it's not.
Understand also with amenities, that we'll have, it'll have to have walking trails and connectivity of some sort and sidewalks. That's subdivision regulation. When you think about amenities such as a clubhouse and a pool, you normally think like subdivision. And there's a HOA and there is HOA fees. But in rental property, you don't have that. So there's not a substantial way to subsidize the pool and the clubhouse.
Well, it's just part of their rent that they pay for all that.
You got one, you got a single landlord with 187 tenants.
That's right.
28.
Sorry, 100, how many?
128.
128, I got, somehow I got off of my numbers. So 128. I, I, I think the pool and the clubhouse is, is a, is integral. I think it'll be important to the marketing. So I, I actually wouldn't want you to get rid of it. I, I think you put it on the plan because you guys think you need it.
That's right.
In this particular product.
That's right.
And you got to be competitive.
And, and based upon the topography of the site, that pool location and outdoor amenity is, you're in the trees from beneath the, you know, as a fall-off. It's a, it's a unique environment.
I, I can think of other locations in the town. I mean, I think of like the, remember the big four-story buildings that Craig Allen brought to us a number of years ago next to the high school?
Yeah.
On that, I mean, I think a missing middle, some sort of product similar to this could be real interesting on that piece of property. I mean, so, but I, I do think there, there are other candidates in the town to have this, this type of mixed residential.
But no apartments?
Right. I'm okay with the rental. The rental doesn't bother me.
No, I mean, talk about Craig Allen's property.
The multifamily.
I mean, I, I would not support, you know, big mass, massed buildings there, but a mixture like this where you've got all sorts of products, you know, and maybe one or, I mean, we're, we're getting off on the weeds. I guess what I, my thought is, I do think there are other candidate sites that I, in the town that, and we're not just focused on this one side if we're going to amend the zoning district. And I do support having a site plan tied to any proposed R6 rezonings. And, and so that'll take a separate action item.
If I could ask for clarification, just what's across the street? And what's the zoning of the general area? Because like if we were talking about walking.
Well, you've got, you've got the RVs across the street.
Oh, that's regional commercial down here.
Which is Buddy Gregg, which is commercial.
There's a little strip.
This is a probably planned residential, probably in Knoxville.
I think it's 18 units an acre.
In Knox County, yeah.
And then this is up to 12 units per acre, hasn't obviously been built yet. This is currently zoned R1 rural residential. And it's shown on the future land use map, all this area is open space cluster and open space because there's a lot of sinkholes. There's, these are sinkholes here. Then there's a wetland, a huge jurisdictional wetland here and sinkhole. That's basically undevelopable.
So can you explain a little bit Tapestry and the property to, that's on Knox County.
Yeah, these are in.
It's Knox County zoning. And they have what, we have our open space residential overlay only goes over R1. And so it limits it to 2.178 units per acre. Their planned residential is the same philosophy, but it can go up to, well, this one goes up to 12. The Tapestry went up to 18. So they can cluster their buildings, but they have a higher, it allows for a higher density, so.
This, this particular property, and I don't want to get necessarily caught up in the property, but it's about 50% open space for this 14 and a half acres with this layout. So there's a sizable amount of common open space on this. Similar to what the overlook is, it's 50% open space because it has a wooded area that goes pretty far to the north that they didn't develop. That was part of the, part of that zoning district. It was kind of an, an open space overlay applied to R6 was, was that one was created. And that might be the district if, if we want to move forward with anything here, that it would be applied to that district to have that additional open space requirement where you have this kind of development.
Good thought. Any more questions, comments?
What kind of guidance do you? Sounded like the majority of people wanted to.
To know if there's enough support to move forward or not.
It sounded to me like there was.
It's not unanimous support, but I do, I do think that there's, there's a fair amount of support.
Ultimately, of course, if it gets this far, the Board of Mayor and Alderman's going to be the final decision maker because it's clearly going to require amendments to the zoning ordinance and the text. I mean, the zoning text and the map.
Well, is significant public outreach required for any of that?
For this? I mean, I don't, I don't know. I mean, it's-
I mean, we didn't remove R6.
Right.
We didn't necessarily put a moratorium on it.
No.
We, I mean, but, but there was some consensus of, hey, we've had enough, quote-unquote, apartments.
Well, and this would have changed, would require a change to the land use plan.
Yeah, it will. Yeah, and the zoning ordinance, and that'll obviously be a long public process. We'll have to workshop it again, I'm sure. Does it make sense if we did something to just have a, some kind of language in the R6 or the R6 open space overlay, or does it-
Well, I mean, I'm not sure that I'm fully on board with all of this, but he's limited, right now it's eight units an acre. So we have a medium density, six to eight units per acre, and we do not have a zoning ordinance that meets six to eight, other than neighborhood convenience commercial allows up to eight units an acre, I think.
Mm-hmm, yes.
This is 8.7?
Yes, it's just under nine units an acre.
Oh, it's under nine, okay.
Yeah, it's under eight points.
But this, to, to fit your point, still, it's still kind of lost in the middle of, of a couple different districts.
Yeah.
You know, R5 is specifically for town, or-
That's duplexes.
Duplexes, so that doesn't work. And, you know, it's really a multifamily R6, but it's just a different building and product type.
Well, that's kind of the point, isn't it? That's why this stuff doesn't exist.
Yeah.
That's right.
Because we don't, we don't allow it in any zoning district the way it's set up right now.
That's right.
You know, and that's, you know, from time to time, folks bring new and innovative ideas before us, and then we either reject them or embrace them. I just don't see how this isn't going to have to be part of the, part of it moving forward in the future. So I say, whether this piece of property or this exact concept, or the two apartment buildings, I think doing the work on building something, some, some zoning that would allow for this in the future is important.
So pass forward, Mark.
Okay, well, I mean, I know it's not consensus, and that's fine, but I'll try to figure out.
That's right.
Yeah, probably be December before we have anything to, at least a draft of anything, because I need to think about-
Well, further discussion at the next meeting.
We could potentially, I don't know if we'll have anything for November or not, but we might want to just, you know, I need to think about it. I need to think about how, where this would apply and how we would want to-
Well, that's the key, to work out how-
Provide for it.
How can this concept find a place in, in our, in our toolbox?
Yeah.
I mean, it could be as part of your concept, if you go with, with a mixture option that you can't exceed, whatever, nine units per acre, or, you know, you could add some parameters in there to deal with that, and-
I'd look more at eight an acre, not nine.
Eight, okay. Then, yeah, we could look at stuff like that, and maybe a maximum footprint for any one building would be something else to look at. I don't know.
And maybe you incentivize them and, and give them a little bit more density if they're providing this much open space, you know? Maybe there is a way to get up to nine or 10 with 50% open space.
Yeah, like, yeah, you increase the density with increased open space.
Right.
Potentially.
Again, I hate just to throw it all out, and where all of a sudden, the math doesn't work for the applicant. Just, you know, if there's a way to dangle a carrot for some other things that we do want, to be able to give them a little more density, I'd, I'd like to explore that.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, Mark?
We'll probably have something for further discussion, at least, for next time.
Okay, very good. It's going to Adam-